All right, we would invite all who appear to join us on a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shall the City Council meet its call to order? Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You see it, please? Roll call. Who is Mr. Crum?
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cutlet?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin?
I will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from October 20, 2025. Second. There is a motion by Mr. Robertson, second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the Journal from October 20, 2025. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. Anyone has any public comment to make before council? When you come to podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. Did anyone receive any public comment by email? Hearing none, saying none. We'll move forward then to reports from standing special committees. The Treasury Economic Development Committee did not meet. So we move forward then to the Public Works and General Operations Committee. Councilman Robb.
That was made on the 28th. And Mr. Geis brought a few things to us. First thing we discuss is the law director is working on a purchase agreement for the old fire station for the CIC. Then a reminder that we have a charter amendment on ballot. So it's coming tomorrow. So get out there and vote. Still working on the Mickey Road project and the safe route to school project. And when the leaves are off, Joe will do his room for inspection. Got to park room, having some vision problems here. Parked here, read my notes. And speaking of leaves, make sure when you clean your leaves you remind people out there just to the curb, not on the street. And the city will come along and clean those up. And last but not least, Terry Marshall will be retiring February 28. That is all.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Robb. And any comments or questions for Mr. Robb regarding his report? Hearing none. We'll move forward to reports of city officials. I already have no reports. I have two items under my report here, two motions. So I would consider receiving those motions. Mr. Martin?
I'm going to request a liquor permit hearing for 147 Shelby LLC, Lupus Mex... oops, I don't know how to say it. Mexican restaurant and bar, 147. Mr. Robb?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Robertson to request a liquor permit hearing for 147 Shelby LLC, Lupus Mexican restaurant and bar, 147, Mansfield Avenue. Discussion. Mr. Cutlet?
Just if I'm looking at this right, I assume it's been sold to a different company?
That's fine, Mr. Crum.
Still have the same Mexican restaurant, just new ownership?
Done some exterior renovating there, too. Further discussion on to request a hearing. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion fails. Thank you. Next motion.
Who to confirm the appointment of Kenneth Pappy to the Board of Park Commissioners to fill on his term pending 12/31/2028?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, second by Mr. Martin to confirm the appointment of Kenneth Pappy to the Board of Park Commissioners to fill on his term pending 12/31/28. This is Mr. Jeffrey Allen. It's asked, you know, someone may take his place on that board. And so I believe that Mr. Pappy is born and raised here in Shelby, Shelby, Bradley. Must be even more of a Walmart community. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
The confirmation of both passes. Now come to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance, report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to everyone in the town who filed their tax returns this year. Very busy down there. Actually, Matt just sent out a large amount of letters as a reminder to anybody who didn't file. And he's been very busy the last few days getting phone calls with people like, oh, yeah, forgot. So for any of our citizens who haven't filed, please stop by City Hall and get that taken care of. We are also in the search for a tax clerk. We have several very, very good candidates for that, so.
You've begun the interview. Initial interview process, correct?
Correct, yes. That's real. All I have is a little.
Thank you, sir. How much of your question from Mr. Crum? Hearing none. Moving forward, Mr. Eisner, Law Director.
I'm the board mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geis is not here this evening. New business we brought to Port House? Unfinished business, and Mr. Ensmann is not here this evening, so it looks forward something next meeting with Mr. Ensmann. And the other unfinished business. Now let's move forward to legislation.
Orders number 24, 2025, amending Chapter 1050 Electricity, Section 1050.404 Metering and Billing G Deposits encountered by ordinances of the City of Shelby Island.
I'm going to start reading. Second.
There is a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of Order Number 24, 2025. Mr. Cutlet. Oh, Mr. Cutlet. Okay, I'm sorry. That was a second by Mr. Cutlet, my bad. For the Order Number 24, 2025. Discussion. Mr. McGlocklin?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to refer the City Council to the packets. If you could get that out. Mr. Ensmann put this together and turned page 16. Page 16, from the handout. So at this point, a little background information. This, it passed its first two readings. We postponed it twice. We sent it back to committee for further work. Mr. Ensmann, he got with his staff and looked into this further with some recommendations from City Council. And he came up with this packet here. And so at this time, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend as per this handout for Orders 24, 2025, Section 1.6, to add the blue and red deleting. And then I'd like to read the paragraph in its entirety for the record. "The utility office shall have a reasonable time to ascertain that the obligations of the customer have been fully performed before being required to return any deposit. For homeowner and commercial industrial accounts, the deposit shall be credited to the customer's account after 60 months, five years, unless the customer's account has been terminated. For the rental accounts, the deposit shall be credited to the customer's account when the account has been terminated. For all account holders, any remaining deposit not used to credit the account shall be directly reimbursed to the customer or paid within 30 calendar days."
Second.
Is that second? So we have an amendment by Mr. McGlocklin and a second by Mr. Robb to amend Section 1. Sections, yes.
Section 1.
Yeah, Section 1, paragraph 6, I wish I should have wrote that. And I think you understand, again, with the handouts in front of you, the red will be deleted, the blue will be added as so red into the record. Any questions about the amendment or any discussion on the amendment? Hey, Mr. Martin?
Just administrative note. For future reference, when we send these back to committees, they can come back in an amended form. We don't have to amend them as a council. So committees can just do that on their own and then bring us the amended form to work with. Just for future.
For substitute orders to, yeah.
For future reference. Because once we give it to the committee, we're giving them the ability to do all the amendments themselves. So, anyway, just neither here nor there. We'll go through the processes.
Yes, Mr. McGlocklin?
And just another note. Mayor, Mr. Ensmann, he's just planning on being here. There's a situation that he's taking care of with the city. He may be here as soon as he can. But at this point, that's why he's not with us.
Thank you. In further discussion on the motion to amend as per the handout. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cutlet?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
That motion to amend passes. Any discussion on the third reading? Mr. Robb?
Again, I'm opposed to the increase in the deposit. And I refer everybody to the second page of this handout. And there's a demonstration on that second page exactly why this is not a good idea. If you look at that inflation calculator, $300 in January of 2017 cost you $400 today. So, you know, with the increases in rent, increases in the cost of living, food and clothing and childcare and everything else, just with the housing situation the way it is, you know, a lot of people out there can't afford decent housing, and this is just adding to their problems. So I just don't agree with that. I am in agreement with the, with the, with the way the deposits are handled as far as the timelines on those. I have no issue with that, actually. I'm glad to see that. But I still have a problem with the increase.
Mr. Cutlet?
So I would like to speak to that as well. The inflation calculator was put in there as showing what the buying power in 2017 compared to 2025 is and why we should increase it from 300 to 400. Is, it really doesn't do anything as far as bringing down the amount of money that is currently over. Because all that's doing is, all this is doing is adjusting for inflation. And if you turn to the third page, you'll notice that he has outlined the year 2009 to 2016 for good measure because that's when we used to not give the deposit back after 12 months. We used to keep it until the account was terminated. And as you can see, the outstanding amounts still are there. They still grew. That really didn't change anything. So, yeah, I think it does help in a sense, a little bit, but it's not really correcting the problem. And the 400 increase is not going to correct the problem. Actually, if you look at the bottom sentence where it says the average outstanding amount after 300 was returned, really 300, 300, 600. I mean, you would have to increase it to $600 to actually bring that amount down. So the 400 is kind of a no-brainer. It's just acting as an inflationary thing.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not necessarily opposed to some increase, but I don't want to give the perception of I'm opposed to any increase here. I just want to make sure that the increase is true form. The issue I have with just using an inflation calculator is that our power rates have not gone up at the typical rate of inflation. We've worked very hard to make sure that our power rates have actually, like over the past three or four years, stayed fairly static. So I would have liked to have seen more of an inflation within the average bill of actual homeowners versus inflation that may or may not apply to our situation, if that makes sense. Because this is supposed to cover the inflation of the actual electric accounts, not inflation overall, if that makes any sense. Again, I'm not opposed to an increase. The question is, is the increase that is posed justified fully? And I'm a little on the fence of that, to be honest. I know in the initial documents, there was talk of amending residential electricity and water and sewer from the proposed 400, amending that to 300. Is anyone able to walk through the, what was the reasoning behind not doing that? I'm referring to what is stricken out on 16, 18, et cetera. 104. I don't know if anybody is able to speak to that.
Mr. Cutlet?
Craig DeFrolo, isn't that currently 300?
Yes, a question.
Mr. Martin?
No, I'm looking here at number four. It says 400.
I think it's currently 300.
Yeah, I'm looking at legislation. You know, legislation says 400. The proposal, as it was initially sent, was to amend that 400 to 300. And so I'm just wondering why the decision was to remove that.
I'll go get to Pastor Roberts, except you're asking a question of the committee members. Yes, yes, yes. So the committee members, so Mr. McGlocklin?
Question, Mr. Ensmann's not here. He's the one that put this packet together. He may have put that in there as a possibility of to do that, but put it at 400. He just kept it at 400 instead. But I'm not here. I can't speak for sure.
Councilman Robb?
Well, I would like to thank Councilman Cutlet for supporting my argument. And that $400 isn't going to make any difference. So if it's not going to make any difference, why are we doing it? That's the question I have. And having that in mind, I move to amend that 400 to $300.
I'll second that. All right. So now we have a motion to amend, that would be in G of the, as it is while you see in the hand where it puts 300 string. So it would be G on our piece of legislation as well.
G4.
G4, yes, G4. G4 to 300. And then G4, 300. Motion made by Mr. Robb, and second by Mr. Martin. So the motion to amend, small g4 in parentheses, instead of 400, to be 300. Now discussion. Tomorrow.
I think that would, the initial, the initial kind of like a multi-tiered approach. But in reality, the, having a singular deposit for no matter what kind of service or combination of services you get from the utilities office, I think, makes sense. Especially, you know, we all understand, like, of these three, electricity is the behemoth of the three. Unless somebody just loves taking showers. But even then, I don't think your water and sewer bill is going to outpace your need for that. Also, I think with our curb, I don't know, there's not many places that won't have water and not have sewer. Correct? Because we don't have that many septic systems anymore within the city limits. So really, you're looking at kind of an AED proposition. They're either paying for electricity or they're paying for electric, water and sewer. I think having it at 300 across the board, I think it's still, as a middle ground, it gives, it does give us an increase for those who are primarily electric, which I would venture to say is predominantly a lot of your renters because the water and sewer is covered by the landlords in some of those instances because they don't have separate heaters. And so, you know, I think that provides what we're trying to do in lowering our outstanding balances at the same time, not nickel and dime people necessarily with a substantial increase of the higher end there. So I think it's a good middle ground, and it makes it more conform. And like I pointed out, in the initial PowerPoint that I was given, it said that we were, the plan was to amend to 300. And that's been hints stricken, which is why I asked the question. So I think 300, 300, 300, 300. I'm not, I'm not excited about it, but I think with the changes we made in crediting back deposits, I think that's a pill that I'm willing to swallow. But Mr. Ensmann's here so he can answer that question, the question I had initially.
For the record, Mr. Ensmann is now in attendance, and we're in discussion of Orders Number 24, 2025. The amendment that is in the red and blue had been made and voted upon those past. Now there's a motion on the fore to amend this G4 to 300. And there's a discussion of the reasonings of those particular numbers. I do think in that initial handout, we did have 400 that written, that first document said.
Yeah, we did. It was a 400. So the, this legislation was referred back to committee review this, providing the committee with some additional information. It's all in the packets. So I'm going to refer back to 2016 when we kind of initially discussed raising security deposits. So back '16, the electric deposit was $150. I was able to provide an inflation calculator showing that the $150 was equivalent to $200 in that time period. So fast forward to today, looking at the $300, what that inflation calculator looks like in 2017, $300, to August of 2025, the inflation calculator, according to the CPI, due is $400. So when I started putting this together, I'm looking at the CPI. Looking at what the dollar amount is equivalent to. So the dollar is equivalent to $400 according to the supermarket index. So that, in addition to the page here that presented, draw. You kind of can see years 2009 to 2016. You can see the outstanding amount. This was a 150, this was a deposit of $150 changed to the 300. You can kind of see the $150, when it was, the account was closed. You can kind of see the figures here, what the dollar averages were. The average out after the security deposit was applied, after it was closed, was $278. Fast forward to 2020, currently with the deposit of $300, you can kind of see the average is $299. After, we established that after one, what, four years. So not a lot's changed with that. We're not gaining any ground here. So that's the reason why I brought this to council's attention. You know, we've been through this, 2017 to, all the way through 2024. Again, 278 prior to, we're 299 today. So inflation calculator is stating that the dollar amount is should be $400, if you're looking at inflation calculator.
Robb?
Where are last year's figures here?
They are, 2024. I don't know about you.
You're right. My right, there.
Yes, sir. So if there's a $300 deposit and a $314 outstanding balance, the city loses $14?
No, no, it's losing $300.
I'm sorry?
It's losing $300. After we close the account, we have a $300 deposit. After 12 months, if we give it back, then again, we're losing $300. You're losing $300.
But we've already proved to not give those deposits back after 12 months. So I'm sorry to speak for Mr. Robb. I believe the question is, if that's out of the equation, so I'm trying to figure out what I'm looking at here. So the 314 average, if we had, if we kept that $300 deposit, then on average, we'd be losing per account if they closed, right? Then we'd be losing $14.
It loses 300.
They're still owed $300.
They still $300.
Bill is $614,000. Six points, three bills. These three.
These numbers are after the security deposit was given back.
Was returned.
Was returned. You're still losing. The city is still losing $300.
So this is the, this is the net after the deposit?
That's correct.
Average?
Average.
Now, is this, they've, they've already been given back the deposit.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So in the future, though, we would be holding on to that deposit. Right? So.
Just as I showed you in the, the upper part of this slide here, we come to the end. And then we're still with negative almost $300.
Right, that's when we.
This is all the same $300.
Yes.
We've increased it from 150 to 300. And showing council, we're still at a debt negative of 300. You're going to have to be increased.
Mr. Robb, Robinson, for Mr. Robb.
I guess, he just answered the question. I thought that by keeping.
I thought that by keeping the deposit, we would be, we would be even at least. Apparently that's not the case.
That's not the case, that's not the case. There's one very important one.
Well, that's my question, is this, after you've given the deposit back after twelve months and then you've returned deposit already, and this is the outstanding balance after you've returned the deposit?
Correct. That's what's, that's what's showing.
So maintaining, maintaining the deposit will, will pretty much negate that three hundred and fourteen dollars. You'd have that to draw from.
This is after, we, this is applying, if, if you apply the three hundred after, you're almost in, in, you're almost in the whole six hundred dollars.
And, and I guess I'm struggling to see that here. What's the scenario? A three hundred dollar deposit was applied twelve months, but.
The scenario would be the, the, the outstanding would be six hundred dollars, we get three hundred back and it's still outstanding three hundred. It's almost a six hundred dollar balance was owed.
Doesn't matter.
Then we applied at three hundred, you got three hundred outstanding. You're almost in the whole six hundred dollars.
Twelve months, fourteen months, sixteen months, twenty-four months, whatever. It seems like the average, we're left holding the bag on average at this point, three hundred dollars. And somebody's paying that, somebody's paying for that. It's rest of residential customers or.
It's a loss.
At the bottom.
It's a loss.
It's a loss for us.
It's a loss.
Mr. McGaw. Yeah, so I'm, I'm against the amendment, taking the three hundred. I want to keep it at four hundred.
Mr. Cullum.
I'll second that, I, I think it needs to stay at four hundred. I mean, if, if, my thoughts are, if we end up actually taking this amount down, which I don't see where the four hundred someone do that, but if we do, we can always drop the deposit back if we can. We, we can change it at any point in time.
Mr. Martin.
As much as I have great faith in deposits going down, I would say that the historical record would show that that has never happened. And if we're going by FBI calculators, or CPI calculators, that will never happen. I, so I kind of a midway.
Now, we are discussing the amendment.
We are in step. So if, if we drop it to three hundred, we've already made a substantial change to this legislation. Drop it to three hundred and maybe we do, you know, in a year we review this. And if things haven't gotten better, then you know what, I'll be the first to sign on to us increasing the deposit to four hundred. You know, but let's, let's see if this has the desire effect over a period of a year. And if it doesn't, and we're still going, like, I don't want to pay other people's bills as much as anybody else. But I also have been in a situation where I wanted to rent a place. And coming up with the, the rental deposit and then having a further deposit, it, it, a hundred dollars may not seem like much, but when you are renting a, an apartment for three hundred fifty a month, that is fairly substantial. So I, I, I would prefer, and I'm completely on board this, we've made these changes. If we just leave it at three hundred, three hundred, three hundred across the board, give it a year, and again, we'll run these numbers and we'll say, okay, it dipped, but it dipped very slightly and we, we need to do something more. I, I'm fully on board with that. I, I think we can always go up in our deposits later. I just don't believe that we'll ever go down from that and that, that's just, that's where, where I'm at on that.
Mr. McGaw, that looks like it.
Well, citizens are eating this average twenty-five thousand or whatever it is every year. And so I don't, I don't, again, I don't support the amendment, I want to keep it at four hundred.
Mr. Robb, Mr. Robb.
Well, I, I would agree with Mr., Mr. Martin on this, that I'm leaving it at three hundred dollars and see how, see how it pans out over, over the course of a year or so and then, then revisit it. It, it's not something that we can't change in the future. And going back to what Mr. Cutler said is that that four hundred dollars really isn't going to make a difference anyways. So back to my argument, why no, we'll change it.
Mr. Cullum.
I, I do not think or feel like we should put this on the ratepayers max. Me being a ratepayer myself. Only everybody in this room. You know, it, it goes up for everybody. And it's like a welfare system, really. And I don't think the city should be involved in doing that people's funds like that. I think it should stay at the four hundred at least, if not more. I, I can't do that to my fellow neighbor. And I think if we got into a situation where people couldn't afford their deposits on their rent, then maybe the landlord should step up and drop their deposits on the rent.
Mr. Martin.
We're, we're already increasing deposits here. Let's not act like we're leaving deposits as is. We're increasing the base residential electricity deposit, which is the number one demographic where we're having these problems, which is transient runners. They're the number, they're the number one to do residential electricity and don't do residential electricity, water and sewer primarily. Because landlords are doing the water and sewer. But let's also talk about the economics of it. So, you know, you put it from, we're going from what, two hundred to three hundred? I believe, I'm wrong, but we're going from two hundred to three hundred. The, of the apartments that I have, under my purview, the average electricity bill for those apartments is around seventy-nine dollars. You're talking about already expecting a deposit that is three months' worth of electricity. We're not talking about a deposit like my house where I'm paying as my aforementioned kids and the lights issue at my house, right? Like, you know, my bill's in the, the five to six hundred range every month, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people who are not using that significant amount. We're talking about an average of, you know, like I said, my renters is about seventy-nine, you know, other renters vary, but you know, a one apartment, a one bedroom apartment, we're, we're treating everybody the same here. So we have to do something that's least equitable. And so you're already asking someone to essentially pay a three months' deposit. Like, who does that on the, the rent side? So we're already asking them to do, let's just be generous, say a two months' deposit at three hundred. Let's say that their bill's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars. All right, so it's essentially a two months' deposit. They would have to, at that rate, they would have to go without paying for three months before the city starts to lose money. And we have systems in place right now to where, you know, we're, I'm just saying, let's at least give it a chance to work. We're already increasing the core deposit. Nonetheless, we're saying, let's keep the deposit status on. All we're saying is that the, the higher end, which are more likely your homeowners, let's keep it at three hundred and not four hundred. And let's see what happens when we, for rental units, we hold on to their deposit until they close their account. We're not crediting it, we're holding on to it. Let's see if the basic economics works. And if it doesn't, like I said, I'll be the first one to sponsor legislation to do an increase to, to four hundred. But, you know, to sit here and say, well, four hundred is not enough, we need to do more. How, how do you, how do you do that to somebody who's just starting out? And he's working at Taco Bell and renting a four hundred dollar a month apartment. So that's, that's my pitch.
Mr. McGaw.
Mr. Mayor, we have the information right here, it hasn't worked in fifteen years.
Further discussion on the motion to amend G four to, from four hundred to three hundred, that is the motion to amend. Mr. Martin.
Mr. McGawton's absolutely right, but if we're going by empirical evidence, the situation actually got worse when we increased deposits the last time. So i- if, if that's the case, then we should be lowering deposits, not raising them. Right? If we're using that as the empirical argument. That's, that's, that's faulty logic at best. I'm just saying, like, we, we're already making substantial changes to try to change behavior. Let's give it a chance, see if it works.
Further discussion on the motion to amend G four, um, four hundred to three hundred. Further discussion. On the motion to amend, roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Nay.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Nay.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Motion to amend, it passes, G four to read three hundred. Further discussion on the third reading of order number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five as amended. Mr. Martin.
I just want to thank everybody for the hard work on this. I know Mr. Ensmann, his office has worked tirelessly on this and I think while I think everybody can agree, we believe there's imperfections here, I think we came up with some different ways of looking at things and some a good piece of legislation on things, I'd say.
Further discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five passes its first reading. Third reading. Oh, third reading, I'm sorry, thank you. Passes third reading.
Good for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, mending chapter ten forty, water, section ten forty point oh four, rules, regulations and fixed charges for municipal water system, rule forty-seven and rule fifty-nine, identified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio. Good for reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading of order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Mr. McGaw.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the council look at our packet, page eighteen. I'd like to make a motion to amend as per the handout, with the adding of the blue text and deleting of the red text, and I'm going to read the section three, oh fifty-nine, six into the record. Utility office shall have a reasonable time to ascertain that the obligations of the customers have been fully performed before being required to return any deposit. For homeowner and commercial industrial accounts, the deposit shall be credited to the customer's account after sixty months, five years, unless the customer's account has been terminated. For well accounts, the deposit shall be credited to the customer's account when the account has been terminated. For all account holders, any remaining deposits not used to credit the account should be directly reimbursed to the customer or paid within thirty calendar days. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McGawton, a second by Mr. Robb to amend order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five as per the handout, adding the, uh, all the content in blue and deleting the content in red as it is so read into the record. Discussion on that, motion to amend. Everyone fully understand what happened before this? Any discussion? Mr. Cullum.
Do we also want to add in about amendment, the four hundred to three hundred?
Mr. Martin, I don't think, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I would move to amend the amendment to include that. So it has the uniformity between all ordinances.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to amend the amendment by adding the amendment to, again, I guess on a rule fifty-nine, parentheses four, from the four hundred amount to three hundred amount, is that correct? That is the amendment to the amendment. And rule fifty-nine, parentheses four, from four hundred to three hundred to include that. And discussion on the amendment to the amendment. Everyone understand what was in there? Okay. Roll call please on that.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
That amendment passes after the original amendments. And the discussion on the amendment that's presented by Councilman McGawton. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
That motion to amend passes. Back to the main motion of the third reading. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five passes its third reading.
Good for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Order number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five passes as amended.
Order number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, mending chapter ten forty-four, sewer charges, section ten forty-four point oh eight, deposits of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio. Good for reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading, order number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Mr. McGaw.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend as per the handout, page twenty, adding the blue text, deleting the red text, and I'll read it into the record at this time. Utility office shall have a reasonable time to ascertain the obligations of the customers have been fully performed before being required to return any deposits for homeowner and commercial industrial accounts. The deposit shall be credited to the customer's account after sixty months, five years, unless the customer's account has been terminated. For well accounts, the deposit should be credited to the customer's account when the account has been terminated. For all account holders, any remaining deposits not used to credit the account should be directly reimbursed to the customer or paid within thirty calendar days. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McGawton and a second by Mr. Robb to amend order number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, as per the handout, adding the content in blue, deleting the content in red. Mr. Martin.
Mayor, we would like to amend the amendment to also include in subsection D, changing four hundred dollars to three hundred dollars to a free and full monthly amongst the licenses.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Robb to amend the amendment to include section D, right? And from four hundred to three hundred, that amendment being made. Everyone understand what the intent of this amendment? Okay. This is the amendment to the amendment. Any further discussion or question? Roll call please on the amendment to the amendment.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Motion passes the amendment. Now back to the original amendment as proposed by Councilman McGawton. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
The motion to amend passes. Back to the third reading as amended. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGawton.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
That third reading of order number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Good for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of order number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of orders number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Orders number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five passes as amended.
Orders number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five, mending orders number eight, two thousand twenty-five, annual appropriations and declaring emergency. To lift the rule requiring the order to be read on three separate occasions, be suspended.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cutler, that the rule requiring that orders be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
That motion to suspend passes.
Move for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of orders number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Martin.
Uh, Mayor, uh, we got an email, uh, from, uh, Mr. Crum, so I would like to...
Max one.
That's Max one, sorry. Oh, just, I withdraw my, well, hold on.
Mr. Cutler, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, looks like it was Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. Um, this is, uh, a, a bookkeeping thing, we've got some, some state aid on a project that's upcoming that I had included in the original appropriations. Uh, so this is just, because I have to encumbrance the funds, so this is to increase the line items for that state aid, so that I can do that project.
Further discussion? This...
It's a next year project, I'm sorry.
My point of inquiry was, this, the email, is that for...
Orders thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, that's all, thank you, sir. Further discussion on number thirty-two, twenty-five? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Orders number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, transferring appropriations from the year two thousand twenty-five and declaring the emergency.
Move that the rule requiring the orders be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts, that the rule requiring that orders be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
The motion to suspend passes.
Move for passage of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, discussion? Mr. Martin.
Now, I received an email, uh, from, uh, Mr. Crum, uh, asking that we, uh, put, uh, two, um, sections in there, so I'm going to move for the amendment, I'll let him explain it during the discussion here. Uh, but I'm, uh, to add into the, uh, funds moving, funds, moving funds out of line items, uh, adding, uh, six hundred dash MFG dash five two three, purchase power for fifteen thousand. And then adding a line to the section transferring funds into line items, six hundred dash MFG dash five three seven, EPA fees and permits, fifteen thousand. And, uh, Mr. Crum has indicated he has a, uh, new, uh, certificate, uh, for us to view as well. Uh, and it's in here, if anybody has a question, I believe we all received this at some point.
Second. We have a motion, uh, Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. Roberts, to add the, um, content as contained in the email before us, as read, and also as reflected on the certificate of fiscal, um, of our certificate, rather, to make those as an amendment to orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five. Clear? I think y'all know what we're doing, all right? All right. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five passes as amended.
Move for passage of the ordinance.
Yeah, that was the amendment. That was the amendment.
That was.
Now we need to...
Now we're on the main motion, pass it to the ordinance, second. Discussion on the amended orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, oh, Mr. Martin.
Real, real quick, uh, the email of the day was, was talking with Mr. Ensmann and, uh, the EPA fees, uh, just gone up more than I was, uh, anticipating appropriations, uh, and that's why I transferred those. Everything else is, for the most part, just a little short in one line, uh, line here, a little extra over there. One I will note, because Mr. Ensmann, I think he's pretty proud of, um, in the four hundred fund, we're reducing the diesel fuel line and, uh, increasing the propane, because we switched the boilers over and it's a much more cost-effective, uh, process.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion, discussion on the, passes the ordinance number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five as amended? Roll call.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Orders number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Well, that was awesome, well, how about the... This is the same thing. Mr. Martin.
Couple items, of course, a couple of things will happen before our next meeting, the first one being, uh, we do have an election date tomorrow, so get out there and exercise your, like, the right to, to vote in our electoral process. Uh, and then, of course, the next, uh, next one is, before our next meeting, uh, we'll have Veterans Day. So, I'd like to just, uh, thank all those who, uh, have served and continue to serve. And, uh, without, uh, without my fellow colleagues, uh, all this is really...
And then? Any further mischievous business? Mr. Martin.
Mayor of the council.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for adjournment, roll call please.
Mr. Cutler.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
And passes, council adjournments at seven fifty-seven. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the service.